All right, I've got seven o'clock and call the meeting to order. Thank you everyone for coming out. First thing, I want to go over some ground rules. For audience members, please silence your cell phones, eliminate any background noise. If you're not speaking, please hit the mute icon there at the bottom center of the screen. There'll be a time at the, at the end of each presentation for comments and questions from audience members. Please hit the hand icon or send Greg an email stating you want to be recognized. And you will be limited to two and a half minutes. Please state your name and address for the record. And there will be a time at the end of the meeting for public comment as well. So that being said, let me get a quick roll call. Planning Commission members, Alex, are you with us?
Here.
Tim?
Here.
Andy?
Here.
John?
Here.
And our alternate, Tony, you're here?
Yes.
All right. I see we have supervisors, Shermer and Colin on board.
Here, thank you.
You're welcome. Thanks, Tom. Who do we have with the Kaziki, am I saying that right, Kaziki projects?
You have Todd Meyer from Cowan Associates?
And are you going to be taking the lead on both of these projects?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. And then how about the select properties?
I have Brian Folk from C2C. I'll be taking the lead on that. I think Brian Grant's going to be joining us if he's not on already.
Okay. We'll catch up with him when he gets here. All right, well, let's move on. First thing on the agenda is our reorganization. Election of Officers for the 2023 year. Currently, Tim Marith is our secretary, Alex Almer is our vice chair, and I am the chair. Gentlemen, have any, any thoughts on this?
This is John, I suggest we continue 2023 as we did in 2022.
This is Andy, I concur with John.
Anyone not concur?
Nope.
All right, let's put that into a motion then.
This is John, I motioned that we continue the organization in 2023 as we had in 2022.
This is Alex, I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Proposed, motion carries. Thank you. Next on the agenda is the approval of the December planning commission minutes. Any comments or corrections? Planning Commission members?
Alex, I have none.
Tim, I have none.
Andy, no?
This is John, I have none. I make a motion that we approve the minutes.
I'll second this, it's Tim.
Tim, second that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries, thank you. All right, so our first project, project on the agenda is the Kaziki lot line adjustment on Tower Road. Am I saying that right? Is it Kaziki?
Yes, that's real close.
Okay, thank you. All right, so Todd, you're gonna, you're gonna give us some review of what's going on here?
Yes, the, again, Todd Myers from Cowan Associates, the applicant is traveling tonight on business and could not attend the virtual meeting. But the property is located 313 Tower Road involves two other properties, 309 Tower Road and 319 Tower Road. And essentially, Darius Kaziki is interested in bringing his lot size into more conformity with the zoning district and having a larger rear yard. And a little bit of the part that is coming from the Schultz piece is already being maintained by Darius and his wife. So all three property owners are in agreement. It's a simple lot line adjustment with no new building being proposed. Can I entertain any additional questions from the planning commission? As far as we're trying to achieve?
I have none.
I do have in front of me Steve's review letter dated December 29th. And without going through all of discussion points, I can say that it will be a will comply as outlined in his letter.
Will comply, is there anything that actually needs some attention here?
I don't think so.
We have, we have some waiver requests that we would have to
Yes.
approve, recommendation.
The waiver request, section 504 back in lot, the irregular shape of the lots out there on Tower Road. Section cartway widening, curbs and sidewalks, which are section 5062B, 5064, 513 and 514, the subdivision of land development ordinance. There's none of that in the immediate area. All the property owners adjacent to the easement, to maintain that easement, so we respectfully request consideration for those waivers to be granted.
All right, Steve, is there anything we're missing on your discussion letter here?
I don't think so. I mean, as, as Todd indicated, it's a, you know, regularly, irregularly shaped lots, but they were irregularly shaped lots to begin with.
Right, right.
And as if anyone is unfamiliar with this, this is a, these lots all generally take access off a private road off of Tower Road.
Right.
And that'll continue, continue to be the same.
So essentially bringing this lot into conformity?
Better conformity, yes.
Okay. I guess we appreciate the effort, Ben. Yeah, so I don't have a problem with the waiver request, and we want any discussion on that?
This is Tim, I'm fine with it as well.
This is Alex, same.
John, I'm fine.
Andy, okay.
All right, do we put that into a, into a motion? To recommend approving the waiver requests?
This is Alex, I'll recommend we request the waivers as as presented in Cowan letter of November 18th.
This is Andy, I'll second it.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so you got your waiver approval. So we can, we can do preliminary final tonight, can we, Steve?
Certainly, yeah, there's no reason not to for this type of plan.
All right, so if everybody's on board, can we get a motion to recommend preliminary final?
This is Andy, I'll make a motion to recommend preliminary final approval.
This is Tim, I'll second it.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. All right, so you got your first one.
Thank you, gentlemen.
All right, so why don't we move into your second project?
The second project is Darius Kaziki trading at his business, Teresco Properties, owns two residential properties along Old Bethlehem Pike, just north of his granite and tile shop. This lot consolidation is the first step in the process of bringing Mr. Kaziki into compliance with a stormwater management problem that was issued by West Rock, West Rock Hill some months ago. So he has two residential lots, he's removing one property line to consolidate that, so we can now take the next step in solving the stormwater management problem that I'm sure Steve can refresh everybody's memory. So again, we're not creating new lots, he's not going to build anything at this time. He might do a residential garage once the lot is consolidated, but that would also be in the realm of taking care of his stormwater management on the rear portion of the back property. I have a letter dated December 28th from Steve. And discussion points, as far as I'm concerned, are all will comply. And we have
The first thing that jumped out at me was the, the trailer that's on the property. I see this in the, in the first item of discussion, use of the trailer should be clarified, what's going to happen with that?
Well, I believe my initial conversations with Mr. Kaziki, if you notice, there is an old access easement along the southerly property line. And it is divided exactly 35 feet in width, so it's half bordering the current lot that's considerate, under consideration for the lot line adjustment and the property lines to the south, so that trailer is within that easement, so I'm instructing my client to remove that outside the easement, so hopefully it'll take care of you know, setback issues as well. I believe he's just using it for stories from materials for his granite and tile shop.
It's not going to be a residence?
No.
Is it a residence now?
The, the existing house?
No, the, the trailer.
No, it's used, it's used for storage, what I'm told.
Is it, I neglected to get out to that site this week. Is it a, like a mobile home trailer?
Great question.
Okay.
I'm, I'm trying to remember myself, I think it's more like an office trailer.
Okay.
It's not that large as like a mobile home trailer.
Isn't that going to turn into a rental property?
Not if you say you can't.
I don't believe it can.
Right. And is there any discrepancy having that used as a storage trailer for the, the business on the, on a separate parcel? I guess
So it's used for personal storage, right, Todd?
I believe it is, but if it's an issue, I'm sure Darius would rue of it.
Yeah, that, as Todd alluded to before, we, we've been working with his property there. If anyone's been back there, there's a big stone parking lot in the rear of the site, that, that was installed without stormwater management approval.
Right.
In order to clean that up and get some of their zoning issues addressed, they're consolidating these two lots, and then they're going to make modifications to that parking lot, so. And I think he's replacing everything, potentially replacing everything with another residential garage there for his I, what I understood, personal storage of vehicles, so. I think some of those things will get cleaned up after the fact with the stormwater permit that, that we're working through.
All right. Well, guys, Steve, is there anything in your interview or review letter that needs attention?
So I'm just looking at quickly here. Well, it, it's actually not in my letter, but it, Todd alluded, also mentioned the access easement that's along that side property line that, he had just sent me some emails today on that. So that easement needs to be shown on the plan.
You got that, Todd?
Yes, it's, it's, it's been shown on my plan because I, I sent Steve a revised plan showing that easement and the legal description on where I found the only meets and bounds to that particular easement. So he had, he's aware of it.
Okay.
And you, I'm just, I'm just thinking back, you did send me the documentation on the adjoining property owner notices, right, Todd?
Yes, and both, yeah, both applications, they've been sent out.
Yep. With that, no, I don't have any.
But we do have some outstanding issues that need clearing up, or do we not?
I mean, they just need to comply with the comments in the letter.
So it'll be a conditional?
Yeah.
You have waiver requests?
Yes.
All right, why don't you plead your case on them? Cartway widening, curb and sidewalks?
Cartway wide, yeah, cartway widening, curbs and sidewalks, again, there, there is a no new lots, nothing's been created, the use on the property will not change once we clear up the stormwater management issues with the township. There's no curbs and sidewalks currently along the roadway. So again, we respectfully request consideration from the planning mission to waive those particular items.
All right, I don't, I don't have a problem with those waivers.
This is Alex, I mean, that's a, there's nothing out there now as far as curb and sidewalk goes, but I'm thinking, you know, that's a pretty heavily traveled thoroughfare. And I actually was coming along there the other day and there was someone walking. And I'm thinking that if we start requiring curbs and sidewalks out there, eventually we may actually have the whole thing with a sidewalk.
Well, it's a possibility. We'd have to, you'd have a long, unsidewalk section across the property owner's granite parking lot there.
You did grant waivers for sidewalk on both the, the mar, his marble business and on the corner truck business.
Business, right.
Yeah, true. Well, it's the marble business, it's paved the entire width there, so you could, you know, basically walk in theoretically the parking lot.
Right.
True. If it's ever, if it's ever converted to commercial use, it will be back for land development approval.
That's true, too. Yeah, I think I'm all right with for this project. Any other thoughts from planning commission members?
This is John, I, I agree with Alex's point, you know, if we get to the point where we're connecting the dots, the first thing we need to do is create the dots. But if Steve says that this comes back for land development, that might be another opportunity. So I'd be okay waiving it for now with consideration that this may be an area that we want to put greater focus on going forward.
Right.
This is Tim, I would tend to agree with John.
This is Andy, I'm, I'm okay with the waivers here.
All right, so somebody put that into a motion?
This is Andy, I'll make a motion to approve the waivers listed on the Cowan letter dated November 18th, 2022.
You have a second?
John, I'll second it.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. All right, so I think we're to the point where we should consider conditional preliminary final on this. In agreement with that?
Yes.
Yep.
So can somebody put that into a motion?
This is Andy, I'll make a motion to recommend conditional preliminary final approval of the plan.
This is Tim, I'll second it.
Tim got it.
Go ahead, Tim, you second?
Yes.
All right, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, opposed, motion carries. All right.
Just for the record on that one, Chris, I was trying to vote no on the waivers, but I couldn't get unmuted quick enough.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I mean, it was on me, I just couldn't get the button to work right, so, just for the record.
We might give you, give you a hall pass for technology issues. All right, so that would take care of the Teresco lot consolidation.
All right, gentlemen, thank you very much.
You got it, have a good night, thank you.
Have a good night. Good evening.
All right, so moving forward, we are onto the select properties, Holiday House Road.
Hey, good evening. My name's Brian Folk, I'm with C2C Design Group, we're here tonight to talk about tract of land on Holiday House Road. It's just under eight acres. It's located about 500 feet north on Holiday House Road from the Washington Avenue intersection. Currently consists of two parcels of land, both parcels have existing houses on them. As part of the proposed development, those, both houses would be removed and be replaced, we're proposing 13 new houses. Obviously, that's, that's 11 additional houses, two new houses to replace the two that are coming down. Those are, one of, one of the new 13 lots is fronts on Holiday House Road with a driveway accessing directly to Holiday House. At close to the same location of the existing driveway for one of the houses currently is. And then the other 12 units would access off of the proposed cul-de-sac. The cul-de-sac we're proposing is about 650 feet long. It's a 30-foot wide cartway, parking on one side, 54-foot wide right away. Proposing sidewalk both sides. Site will be served by public water and sewer. I did forget to mention that the site is zoned suburban residential. So minimum lot size is 20,000 square foot lots. Of which we are proposing, all 20,000 square foot lots are larger. There is a proposed stormwater management facility in the northwest corner at the low point of the site. Handle the stormwater design for this as we proceed into preliminary and final development plans. So
The northeast side?
I guess it's the northern side, really, north is to the, the upper left corner of the plan, so.
I'm thinking Washington goes due north, but it doesn't. Okay, anything else?
No, that's it for the overview, if you have any questions, we, we can, I can answer them at this time, or we can go through, I got Steve's letter here. We can go through those items and discuss if there's things you want to discuss on those, on the letter.
All right, let me see if any of the members have questions, if not, we'll roll through the discussion letter. So, any planning commission members have any questions on the project before we get into the letter?
This is Alex, I do not.
This is John, I, I guess I'll, I'll ask my, my favorite question. You mentioned that the cul-de-sac is 600 and some feet long. But Holiday House Road is already a dead-end street. So I would think that the cul-de-sac begins at Washington Avenue. And if we consider it that way, the regular, the road is already out of compliance in terms of our requirements for cul-de-sacs, it's it's longer than 800 feet. I counted that there's already 20 lots off of the cul-de-sac, and it's not fed with public water and sewer right now, so that's also out of compliance. So amongst the planning commission, we talked before about you know, modifying our cul-de-sac requirements for different configurations, allowing for longer length and higher density where there's public water and sewer going to be installed. But this is already, it's being proposed as a cul-de-sac off of a cul-de-sac that's already non-compliant. So I, amongst the planning commission members, how are we proposing to treat this?
Well, you bring up a good point, yeah, Holiday House is not a through road, it's a very, very, very long cul-de-sac, I guess you could call it that.
Right, so, I mean, in order to bring it into compliance, there would need to be another access to either Bridge Road or Bethlehem Pike or I forget what the name of the other street is, but there's no there's no right-of-way that I could see on a map to make it a, a through road.
Steve, you have any thoughts on that? I mean, Holiday House Road, what's it classified as?
Well, it's, I mean, it's a local road, but essentially, John is correct, it's a, it's a dead-end, it's not even a cul-de-sac. There's no turnaround at the end of, at the end of the road, you pull into a driveway and, and back up. Now, we, we struggled with this a little bit on the THP property also, if you recall. Because the internal streets were coming off of the private road that goes back to Hidden Meadows. And while I don't think we fully answered the question, in that case, they had the emergency access to provide the separate entrance out to Lawn Avenue.
Right.
Which more or less addressed the overall concern of having the long entrance road that was a cul-de-sac. So I think the I guess where I'm going here is we, we didn't fully answer the question, but I think you set a precedent of asking for a secondary access in that situation.
Same thing in my development with THP Providence, so we're 53 homes, but there's emergency access to, to get in there.
Right. Yeah, and we interconnected other developments, the, the Garrus developments there across the street from you, Andy, with with Rose Cliff, too, that there's a connection back there.
Yeah, so are there any property available to get emergency access out to, out to Washington with this project?
I don't know, Brian, are you, are you on the call? I'm not a, I'm not aware of any properties.
Yeah, I think most of the properties that are but, you know, in between this site and Washington Avenue will have, have houses on them.
Right. Yeah, I believe you're right. Yeah, that's a sticker.
Going out to Ridge Road might have more open area, but it's still across other, you know, other properties.
Right. Yeah, it's hard to look past the logic that John has introduced here.
So if, if I'm understanding how what, what's been explained is you're viewing this as it the length of cul-de-sac needs to be measured from the intersection of Washington Avenue. Therefore, therefore, we would be, we would need a waiver from cul-de-sac length.
Right.
To construct the way it's posed, and it sounds like that's not something you guys are are willing to do without some sort of secondary emergency access, is that correct?
Yeah. Yeah, it's a hot, a hot button issue, the last couple of projects that we've had in with cul-de-sacs. But yeah, when you consider the Holiday House is not a through road, there's no emergency access except from Holiday House Road. Yeah. So maybe we should circle back to that one and, and roll through the letter and, and see what else we can come up with on Steve's findings here.
Okay, I'll just jump through the letter, try to go through these quickly. Obviously, the first one is just stating that we're doing a B1 single family use and, and our lot areas are between 20 and 37,000. Comment number two is regarding the, there is a parcel of land that the applicant owns that's in between these, these two parcels, there's existing dwelling on it. Originally, we were proposing to not touch that, leave it in. Leave it in its exist, in its existing condition, not touch the lot lines. What Steve is suggesting, and we don't necessarily have a problem with, would be make it part of the development. We can leave the house intact, but adjust the lot lines to try to bring that lot into some sort of more conformity. It's a non-performing lot for lot area. Some of the, there's some encroachments there, so we don't have a problem with trying to bring that into more of a compliance lot. I don't know that we'll be able to bring it to a completely compliant lot, but we can certainly incorporate it and shift some property lines to, to make it more of a compliant lot. It, it would also help us with one of the other comments about irregular shaped lots for Lot 2. We could take that parcel and just attach it where it says "part of Lot 2" to that parcel and then kind of create a corner lot there. And then it would kind of eliminate the irregular shape of Lot 2 then. So that's something we can look at and we will try to incorporate it if we do move forward with this project at this time. All right. Number three is a question about the vegetation being re-established. I did have my landscape architect go out to the site today and take a look and walk through and look at tree calipers and diameters and see if we meet the zoning ordinance. I didn't get to circle back with him to know what the answer on that is yet, but if there are additional trees to meet the woodland definition of the ordinance, we'll get that updated and incorporate that into our site capacity calculations. Number four, yeah, we, we understand and we probably should have done on the sketch, but we got to subtract out the basin easements for stormwater basin on Lot 8 and make sure that still meets the net lot area of 20,000. So as we develop the stormwater design and create in the basins and create the easements, we'll make sure that all the lots are still net to 20,000 square feet. Comment number five, open space is not required. Think really we're getting down to, there are some steep slopes, woodlands we discussed. Hydric soils are mapped. We will go ahead and get a wetlands scientist out there to do an investigation and write a letter if there are no wetlands on site. We don't anticipate there being any, but we will have that certification completed. Number six, looking for a little feedback on this one. We're, we're talking about cartway width. We're proposing 30-foot parking on one side, 30-foot wide cartway. See if that's something the township is amenable to. The houses will have two-car garages and have room for two cars parking in the driveway as well. So there's three off-street parking spaces on each lot for your ordinance, because one of the bays of the garages does not count towards that space. So there will be three. And then we would meet the other one half of, with one lot, one street parking, so.
I guess the question for the planning commission is, are you assuming they could fit the number parking or the overflow parking required on, on street on one side? Do you have a preference as to parking on one side or both sides? On the cul-de-sac? The new portion of the street?
What's, what's distance between driveways average?
Well, the lots are 100 feet in width, so it looks like they're about 100 feet apart, so you can probably park at least three cars between each driveway. So that.
So you're not really going to be able to park in the, in the turnaround area? Although people do. They do all the time, but.
I think we're, I mean, if you do the one half, it's only six or seven spaces needed, and if you're getting three between each driveway, those, you can get 12 along the top if you just between each of those four driveways or five driveways. There's four space, four areas there for three spaces each.
And Steve, 30 feet with parking on one side is sufficient?
That's our, that's our standard.
Okay.
I think it's 34 feet with parking on both sides.
Any comments from planning commission members?
This is Alex. With regard to parking, I think it looks like they can meet the standards. I definitely would prefer to see one side parking only.
Yeah, this is Andy. I'm fine with that. Just to be, I mean, maybe consistent, I, is it, have we picked the right over the left side for parking in the past? Is there any precedent there? Or just keep it the same as in other developments?
There's no precedence. It's usually what makes sense, because sometimes it depends. Like, there's only more houses on one side of the street than the other, that kind, that kind of thing. Like, in this case, I'd probably go with, you know, let's say the top side of, of the plan, that side of the road. Just because you have more houses on that side of the street. Essentially, longer stretch back to the turnaround.
If you run sidewalk out to the, out to Washington, I think I'd rather see that, that side without parking. The, the west side of it without park. I'd rather, like Steve said, to the top of the plan.
Okay. Number seven.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry. Number seven, again, we were just talking about the parking, so we kind of just covered that one. Number eight, talking about the snow removal easement, snow storage easement. We'll go ahead and flip those driveways around and try to make a much larger snow removal area there for you. We'll, we'll at least double that in size. But we'll, we'll try to create a larger space in our final design there. I agree, those, those things tend to not be big enough when you get push comes to shove, so.
And that, that first lot around the corner there, I forget, I can't see what number it is.
Eight?
Guess it's Lot 5. If you could move that driveway over to this, to the straight portion of the road.
Okay.
That would be helpful too. It's just, just a logistical problem for when, when it actually snowed. And the less driveways there, the better, the better it is.
All right. Number nine, I think we, we touched on, again, I'd like to just kind of touch that we are proposing only 11 new lots, so we're under the 12. Now, I know adding Holiday House in as a cul-de-sac already, and you got to count some of the, the houses, but I don't know how many houses actually access off of Holiday House. It might be less than, I think there's only one additional one. I don't think there are any other accesses between our site and and Washington Avenue, so that's something to consider as well, that we would be, I think at the 12 or I'll be 14 total, I guess. 12 new ones off the, off the new cul-de-sac and two off of Holiday House. I'll, I'll move on. Since we discussed that, we can circle back to that later. Number 10, talking about the irregular shaped lots. I touched on Lot number two, that we would try to incorporate that area between the road and the out parcel into that out parcel, so that would kind of clean up Lot 2. Lot 13, I'm not sure what to do with. There's, there is a parcel there. You know, your ordinance doesn't really look fondly upon creating an open space parcel that's smaller than a lot areas either, so I think, I think the configuration that's shown there is, is probably the best that's going to happen there, unless somebody has another suggestion.
What, what's the issue with Lot 13?
It's just irregular shaped. The, the frontage has like an L shape that portion of along the road. I don't know that it's an issue. It's just an irregular shaped lot.
Right.
Yeah, I think in general, we always try to minimize the irregular shaped lots, but you've allowed, you know, when there's no other options, you have allowed it. Now, I think that the concept of that, that the little, the smaller section is on the other side of the street that was supposed to be added to Lot 2, and if, if that could be added to the adjoining existing house, that makes a lot more sense than having the L shape on Lot 2.
Agreed. Moving on, number 11. Yeah, we just showed schematic stormwater. We'll have to do infiltration testing and do a full stormwater study and make sure that that lot air, that is subtracted out of the lot area. We will be probably proposing to discharge to some sort of a level spreader. There's no real defined location to discharge any stormwater on this site. So there'll have to be some sort of level spreader and analysis done to show that we're getting it back to she flow. Not an ideal situation, but something that we, I think we can, can show.
Or you could get an easement from the neighbor. There is a little creek on the next property over.
Correct. That's certainly something we can, we could investigate, see if that's feasible.
Lovely. And by all hesitation is level spreaders, depending on the volume of water, like on really small basins, level spreaders are fine. The larger the basin, you know, over time, they tend to fall into disrepair and may not work properly, but something to look at as you get into design.
I don't disagree. Uh, number 12, public sewer, Sellersville Borough. We did acquire an easement on the Joint Recreation Authority, Holiday House Joint Recreation Authority property to the east, southeast here, to tie into that manhole. So that is something we would, we are evaluating and will be able to provide sewer. There is also sewer down in Holiday House, I mean, in Washington Avenue. But I think the proposed plan at this time is to, to connect in, into, to that manhole on Joint Recreation Authority parcel. Number 13, public water. Again, water has been run up to the intersection of Holiday House and Washington Avenue, North Penn Water. We will be running water down Holiday House to connect.
Um, there. One, one little glitch on that, not that Holiday, or North Penn isn't the right people to be talking to, but as I was talking to the manager early, earlier today, he reminded me that when North Penn took over Sellersville Water, Sellersville had an agreement with the township to serve this area, but North Penn doesn't have an agreement with the township. So this may be a good opportunity for the township of North Penn and you, I mean, being the developer to work together to clean up that agreement issue, so they have, you know, the clear right to serve new properties in, in township.
They're good. We'll, we'll have that conversation with them and see if we can get them moving on getting that cleaned up, facilitate that in any way we can.
Hey, we can jump back to 12 while we're having, having this discussion. You know, Steve had noted about possibly running down Holiday House Road with sewer and water. Is that, is that something that's been investigated?
I think water, water will run all the way down to Washington Avenue. Sewer would run down about halfway and then would tie into a manhole on to the, to the east. There's an existing manhole.
I'm talking about extension down Holiday House.
Chris, I, I think what I was trying to imply with my comment was to not, not necessarily run the sewer further down Holiday House Road, but to design the sewer so it would have a connection point that, that could be further extended and serve other properties.
Right.
Of course, if Select wants to run the sewer, that's, that's a whole other question, but maybe in lieu of their long cul-de-sac street, they'll serve everybody down there, but.
Serve everybody down.
I, I, I could probably safely say that there's some problems at the systems back there.
Yeah, I would assume that. Can't say for certain, but it's a, it's a pretty fair assumption. I mean, would Sellersville be interested in having that conversation and get more, get more hookups?
That's.
Do they want more?
That's always a difficult conversation, because they don't necessarily have any desire to extend their system any more than they have to.
Right, okay.
But they haven't said no yet either, so.
Right.
Steve, this is Alex. It looks like that driveway might be kind of near a high spot. And I think you're going further down Holiday House, you'd be coming uphill.
Yeah, it, it may just be that you could get the cluster of houses that are right, right there. I guess you're taking two of them out. We have the one existing home. You know, maybe you'd pick up the next one or two properties. But you're right, it does, it does then fall down and go down. It's just, like I said, a consideration of, if it's a matter of, you know, making a manhole an extra foot deep so you could get to the next property, it would seem to make sense to do that.
Right. So is that a conversation you have to have with Sellersville?
Well, again, it's not necessarily building the sewers, just setting it up, so it's, but yeah, we, yeah, Sellersville would ultimately have to agree to that.
Right, okay. All right. Go ahead.
All right. Number 14, street improvements. Obviously, we would be required to do improvements along our frontage. Section between Holiday, between our site and Washington Avenue is considered off-site, so I think at this point, we certainly acknowledge the road width that's there and would like to investigate and be willing to talk to the township. It requires a site meeting to see what, what options are out there. I mean, there are 25 homes up there now that are being serviced. Emergency access is getting to them. We're only adding 11 new homes, so the additional traffic is, is pretty minor. And there are, I mean, providing the widening is not a simple task. There's utility poles on both sides. There's a lot of encroachments there. There's now a right-of-way. I think there is some right-of-way on the other side of the road possibly, but I, I guess I want to say at this time, we'd be happy to talk to you and investigate options there, but certainly not willing to commit to providing any off-site improvements at this time.
How about urban sidewalk out to Washington?
Again, that's something that, you know, we'd be willing to discuss, but I mean, that's an off-site improvement. It's not along our frontage, so it's something that, you know, can be discussed as we're, you know, discussing cul-de-sac length and all those other items out there that, that we can try to work something out here.
Brian, I, I did do a little more research and, and the right-of-way was acquired by the township when the Holiday House property was subdivided, and I could provide you with that plan.
Yeah, our surveyors have, have found that and we do have that now shown on our plan. It's not, wasn't on here when we did the sketch plan, but we've now finalized our survey and do see the additional right-of-way on the other side of Holiday House Road.
Correct.
So. So I, I don't know if that's a, is that a, a meeting that we should have on site to, to look at the widening, to see what the best way to to address the situation? Is it a staff meeting with, with the public works people and, and whatnot, or is it just handled here at the planning commission?
Well, I think if the planning commission is inclined to say that that is an improvement they'd like to see, then you could work with staff to see how we can make it happen. And I anticipate planning commission is going to say, yes, that part of Holiday House Road should be improved.
Well, this member will, yeah.
And I, Chris, because it's to say that you're, you would also like to see the sidewalk extended to Washington Avenue?
I would. You know, you have 13, well, 12 or 13 new homes going in there. Thirty, well, 12 or 13 new homes going in there, uh, safely assume that there's going to be children attending. Um, West Rock Hill Elementary across the street. So.
And what kind of width?
Somehow sidewalk should be extended, uh, out to Washington.
What kind of width are you looking for for the roadway widening as well?
Well, I'd ask the engineer on that one.
Yeah, that, that may be something we.
I think 28 feet is the smallest I think I saw in your ordinance for. No parking. For our local road.
Right, pretty ordinance, but I mean, that's, that's something that may be best left to.
Work out.
Yeah, work out what, what makes sense that could be put in.
But the planning commission would like to see curb and sidewalk. Is that correct or just sidewalk?
I would assume curb and sidewalk would be. Advantageous, yeah.
Definitely sidewalk unless there's a compelling reason not to do curb.
Right.
Yeah, sometimes on, on, on a small improvement, it could be a drainage problem with doing curb, but then. Again, something we could work out.
Alright, um, moving along, number 15 is, uh. Road, road, uh, design information will provide both the horizontal and vertical geometry, um, profiles, um, intersection details and everything. When we get into land development. Uh, 16 is sidewalk, uh, we just discussed. Uh, obviously if we extend a sidewalk, we'd have to do some, make sure we have the intersection improvements down on Washington with any kind of ramps or, or. Crosswalk, I guess there is sidewalk on the other side of Washington Avenue.
Correct.
Remember, so.
Yeah, we need a crosswalk or some sort.
Right. Verification of the not, of a notification to the property owners. Uh, we'll do that when we submit preliminary plans, uh, we'll provide a narrative summary, those will comply. Uh, number 19, um. Guess this is, this is recreation land in the amount of $1,400, uh, 1,400 square feet per dwelling unit. Um, is there a fee in lieu of for this? I mean, we're, we're certainly under the 25 dwelling units here. Um, I guess I just wanted to get some more information on what you're looking for here.
Yeah, and, and just for everyone's clarification, there's two different requirements. One is for land and the second is for actual improvements like swing sets and. And play fields. Every development, no matter the size, requires the land. Or a fee in lieu of. Only developments over 25 dwelling units require actual improvements like swing sets and. Basketball courts, et cetera, et cetera. So in this development, you, you're dealing with the land and or contribution.
Alright, and then we will be proposing to do a fee in lieu of that, that's acceptable to the planning commission here. Obviously it doesn't make, I don't think it makes a whole lot of sense to put a little pocket of. Of record land in the middle of this area. Excuse me.
So how about that part of lot 13 by the road?
Certainly, I think we could create that as a parcel and, and. Create as rec land. I don't, is that something you would want dedicated to the township then? Is that how that would work or?
I don't know how that works. We actually just take the money.
Would that parcel give you, would that parcel give you sufficient area? Would it only be a portion of the area?
I don't know if it would be total. Let me just do some quick little math here. Um. So we need 1,400 times. 13, that's 18. It would not give me enough, I don't believe.
Okay.
And I guess it just. Uh, if the township or if the planning mission were. Thinking along the lines of land, uh, we'd want to get input from the park and rec committee. They, they may not have the same, the same thought that, that you're have.
My personal thought is that, that, if that doesn't meet the ordinance, then I'd rather see a, a larger. Area and take the, the fee in lieu of for that.
I agree with Alex.
Alright, uh, number 20, landscape plans. Uh, yeah, your ordinance is very, uh, thorough and it's landscape requirements. We'll, we'll go through and make sure we. Address all the, uh, required landscaping, street trees, replacement trees. Stormwater plantings, et cetera. Um. 21, E and S and PDS approval to the county conservation district. Um, and then 22, any waiver request would be in writing. Uh. That's. That's it in the letter, um. I guess the. The big question here is, is back to the, um. The cul-de-sac, you know, length waiver, I guess that we're going to be, would be required, uh, coming off a Holiday House Road and, and considering Holiday House as a. I guess a dead end street or a single access street. I mean, it's like we said, it's not really a cul-de-sac, but. Um. Guess the question is where do, where do we go from, from here, um, from, from your end?
Yeah, um. Well, I mean, can you investigate, uh, picking up an easement to, to get a, you know, an emergency access to either Ridge or Washington?
Yeah, we certainly, I can, I can talk to Brian and then we can. Uh, we can do that. I don't know that that's going to be a feasible option, but it's certainly something we can investigate.
Investigate.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, this is a, this is a hot button issue, uh, has been a hot button issue of the last, last two years, uh, with some projects. Um, and the, you know, the supervisors are, are well aware of it as well. Um. So I, 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 I don't know how likely, uh, we are going to be to, to waive that, uh. That distance.
Well, we've had several other applicants that we haven't.
Right.
So I mean, why would we?
Exactly.
Turn around and do it here.
Yeah, I mean, this is a unique case, but.
Yeah, I was gonna say, would it be something that, that would be considered if there were some improvement, offsite improvements on? You know, down to the Washington Road, Washington Avenue there to. I mean, that aren't necessarily required as a developer, but we would offer to do those maybe. Uh, I mean, I don't know, I'm just throwing things out there.
I can, I think the township considers it to be a safety issue. So it, it's, it's not just a, a convenience. It's a matter of. If there was an emergency situation, how do we ensure that the safety of the residents there as much as possible?
How, how are they insured now? I guess it's the question. There's already.
And, and you're right, that, and that is the question is it's already non-compliant. So. If we've got a non-compliant situation that's already existent. Do we turn a blind eye to that or do we make attempts to mitigate it going forward?
Well, that's, I'm, that's my thought is maybe there's something we can do to help. Maybe not reduce it, but at least alleviate it for this front portion. Uh, we're not going to be able to solve the problem for the entire length of Holiday House Road, but. Maybe between here and Washington Avenue, there's some, some things we can do to. To help reduce the chances of something happening, um. With that narrow partway, just.
It's a valid point.
Well, you can certainly talk to staff on that situation. Um, I, you know, we. We have, have to get that worked out before, you know, any, any farther with this project.
And I think, I think it's worth, you know, if the developer does. Do a little research into whether there's a possibility of an access easement, at least report that back to the planning commission, you know, not necessarily. Submit a revised plan if nothing major is going to change, but. At least report back to the planning commission so you're aware of what the situation is.
And that easement doesn't necessarily just have to be from this development. It would have to be from some point. Either at or further down Holiday House Road. Emergency access out to someplace else. I, I know where that would be, even if it's at the tail end going out to Bethlehem Pike. If that presents itself as an option, I think that would then. Help to alleviate the situation.
Yeah.
Yeah, unfortunately.
It, it's, they're all.
It ends in the, in a quarry.
Yes.
Holiday House Road ends in the old quarry back there. Um. There's not a lot of ways out of that quarry that I'm aware of. Um, it's amazing that there's a house down there.
Yes.
Yeah.
Chris House had his hand raised for half an hour now. His elbow must be getting tired.
I, I haven't seen now, I'm sorry. Hello, can you hear me okay? Barely here. Oh, okay, well, let me try shouting at the laptop. Uh, the evening now summer, 125 Green Road, uh, I'm, I'm the supervisor, but also in the Holiday House Board, just looking at. Uh, I mean, familiar with Holiday House, it occurs to me that. Holiday House is literally directly across the street, so one possibility would be putting. A walking path or trail because we have some existing basketball courts, top box. And so I just play it just, just on the other side of the road to foot. I, I, we could afford to end it, but the great thing, we got a place that's on the other side of the road. Along with the entire series, that's, 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 that's a little bit of a, would be a better idea. The other thing that occurs to me is that Holiday House. Holiday House School, that's, that's, that's. Fronted along the, like, direction, right on the opposite side of Holiday House Road. Which would be a logical place to put a trail or a sidewalk on that. South. South side of Holiday House Road, all the locations of, like, that's. That could possibly just more sense because it's very, it aligns with the existing sidewalks that cross. From Washington Avenue, there is a drawback, it's, it's, it's sidewalk, it's hard. Also, if you're stalking, instead of doing right, acidated, grating path, law, and, and blockages, you'd have to be higher up on the dry path. Uh, so far as emergency routes, what occurs to me is if there is a. Old, old street, there's a water main under the back, comes along the back of the Holiday House. School property and then cuts across Holiday House Road that goes up to the water tower over at Wombles, uh, sleep bag on Bridge Road. So if there is existing, sort of, to work on water, like, to get to their water tower. Where the water tower has right away to their high texture water main that goes from that tower. Down here, part of the Holiday House, plus Holiday House Road, across the Holiday House. School property, like, on the hockey ball court, and then it comes down someplace close to, uh, winners that watch. They did a couple of things that occurred to me last week.
Okay, so I heard some of what you said. Um, you're, you're a little muffled. Um. So first I heard was, uh, some type of a walking path over to Holiday House to use their recreational facilities, correct? Now. Yeah, yeah, I think that, yeah, it's a good idea. Um, the. The, the. Easement or dirt road that connects from Holiday House Road to. The water tower, I, I don't necessarily, is, is that an easement there or is that part of the Wombles properties?
I know that there's a access road to get down to the North Penn Water Authority Water Tower. And then there is an easement that runs along. To, that runs under Holiday House School, like, behind the school, that where the water lines from that water main come through. So, North Penn Water Authority has an easement. Through there for their big water pipe. I assume if they all were to do that because they shut down that portion. But there is an easement there that I guess much has been cleared. That is another alternative to get back out to this road. Down the relatively shortest distance. No idea whether it's practical, but I know that there's an easement there because the number written ended on our plan. When we had the package, I said, if you get those big, they're not big. And then if there is going to be any sort of trail or walking path, it makes sense to put it on the opposite side of. Holiday House Road, along at least the Holiday House. School fronted, because then that winds up at the intersection of Washington Avenue and Holiday House Road. If you're fifty sidewalks, which is on the south side of. That is Texas. If I didn't do the math, you see the sidewalk just connects to Long Avenue, the grand view on the left. Fifty inch, inch, tails and rates that come to my mind. Alright, hopefully I can do this.
Alright, thank you. But all, all good points, thing to, things to consider. Alright, so. Where, where are we at? For some reason, I never even saw that your hand was raised. I don't know.
Okay, uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, I forgot one thing. Uh, not if it's still applicable, but there is a 1993 twin associate study that looked at tax gap in Harfield. One, two, and 151, 153, 154. Were initially looked at for being connected to a sewer system. Uh, oddly enough, one fifth, the first one fifty three, the one that the driver was going to, was again, uh. Check out is having a certain thing, wasn't set to produce those figures. So, but I'm not sure if they were six digits or less, thirty four, four years, that's, that might be something to double check and pull out the old files. Uh, what? Twin associates file number thirty three, ten, zero, two, zero, September of nineteen ninety two. That's a very long, I'm gonna hit copy of the script. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Alright. Moving on, um, do we have any other comments from, uh, planning commission members on this project?
Yeah, this is John, one, one other thing. Um, the site capacity calculation. I'm looking at page two, 10 of the zoning code. And of the section, site capacity calculations for SRRC and MHP districts. For woodlands, it leads, lead, sorry, for woodlands, it shows the protection ratio at sixty percent. And your calculation shows twenty percent.
I'll, uh, I'll take a look at that and confirm, um. I don't have the ordinance in front of me here tonight. I apologize, but I'll, I'll look at that and make sure if it is sixty, we'll make whatever adjustments need to be made.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Alright, well. We've got some things, uh, to work out here, um. So why don't you, uh?
Yeah, we'll circle back with, with the applicant. We'll, we'll investigate. Any easements for a second access point. We'll take a look at sewer and water connections. Obviously, we'll look a little closer at that Washington, the holiday hat, Holiday House. Road improvements down to Washington Avenue, um. Those are, are the, uh, the highlight. I think we gotta, gotta evaluate here and see, see how we can, if we can overcome the. The cul-de-sac length issue in the single access street of, of Holiday House, so.
Right.
Alright.
We'll wait to see what you come up with.
Alright, thank you for your time.
Alright, thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Alright.
Chris, was there any public comment on that?
I was just gonna ask, is there any public comment? I was looking to see if the, anybody had their hand raised. Uh, Greg, did you have, no emails? Okay. Alright, thank you. Alright, so we're gonna move forward, uh, old business. Uh, we still have some comprehensive plan initiative discussions to have. Um, we've been letting John lead that. John, do you have anything for tonight?
Yeah, I do. Thank you. Um. Every time I think I'm heading in the right direction, I hit another stumbling block. So the, the topic that we've been discussing when we've had time is, is the lot size issue. And. We talked about increasing minimum lot size in the. RC area and Mary wasn't in favor of that. There's currently no open space requirements. In the RC area. So the other area I was looking at was the, the resource protection clause. And I, I brought that up with, with regard to this previous project. But I made a false assumption when I was looking at that as a possible solution. And that is. That section seventeen oh one is fairly. That section seventeen oh one is fairly descriptive in terms of. Open space requirements, i- it, it should be, you know, set aside from the. Cut off from the top, it should be a continuous piece of ground. It shouldn't be fragmented, it should be regular shaped, it's, it's its own parcel. So that, that seemed like it was a way to go. However, I made the false assumption that when you looked at the resource protection requirements. That those same. Stipulations apply, and in fact, they don't. If, if you look at the, the previous plan that we just looked at. The area that they identified for woodlands. Is, is just cut from the existing properties and remain part of the existing properties. So. You know, and, and it's, you know, it's a cresting shape around the back end of the lot, it, it's, it's really just. Trees that they're not gonna cut down. That they can declare that as their, their resource protection. So, that's suburban residential, but if you, if we took that same approach with. Um. The R C district. We'd really run into the same problem, even if, at one point eight acres. If a lot is fully wooded at one point eight acres and you said. You know, you're gonna dedicate forty percent or even fifty percent of that. You know, fifty percent of a one point eight acre lot is point nine acres, and you could still do an awful lot with the remaining point nine acres, so. We wouldn't really be saving anything by letting each point nine, you know. Having point nine acres or, or fifty percent of each of one point eight acre lots. Not cleared. We're not really doing anything there to reduce the size or the number of lots. That would be in the area or even necessarily forcing. A larger. Lot size for wooded lots. Unless we took that percentage to, to something much higher than fifty or sixty percent. So, I, I hit another snag with my, my thinking, and I'm not sure where to go from there. In terms of how to work towards. A solution that results in fewer developed lots. In the R C area. So I'm looking for ideas on how to proceed. Or should I just kind of table this for the time being and, and move on to look at some of the other items?
I'm really appreciative of the work you've done on this, John, and unfortunately, I just don't. Don't have another way to, to do that easily. Unless we were to. Like, double back and look at some kind of. Larger overlay where we look at, say, wood, larger wooded portions of the municipality. And try to keep those woodlands more intact.
But as I. Was about the, about the overlay, if that was something we could pursue. Cause Mary had mentioned that as well, right?
Yeah, I believe so. And then instead of looking at just the woods on one lot, maybe you could look at. Where do you have, you know. Continu- contiguous woodlands that you wanna try and preserve. And then try and come up with some way to do it that way where. You know, if you're within this overlay, then that's. That would give you. I don't know, maybe, you know, you could justify a higher percentage of. Of preservation at that point. Like you said, uh, you know, John, I'm not sure. You know, even if you got to seventy-five percent, would that really be meaningful? On something like that, yeah, if, if you're just forcing it to. Even to two acres, you're really not changing much.
Right.
Yeah, I'm just thinking of like the, the Green Top Project. Maybe you would have eliminated one more lot.
It, and I thought of that too, that, that's kind of been my, my. My, my thought experiment through this whole thing, but i- if you look at the Green Top. One, there was maybe one or two one point eight acre lots. But there were also. Larger lots. You know, four, four or five acres, and if. You looked at the whole site. And you knew you said, well, the whole site you needed to preserve. Seventy-five percent of the woodland area. Over the entire site. You could still carve out. Whatever that was, eight or nine lots. And clear enough space for eight or nine lots within. The overall site and still preserve seventy-five percent of the wood, so I. I mean, I, I, I can continue down that path and see if I could come up with, with something. That would get us in the direction we wanna go, but as I said, I, I thought I was going there until I. I saw the schematic that, um. Select properties put together, and I, I realized I made a false assumption about. Woodland preservation is not treated the same way as open spaces. So I whiffed on that one.
Yeah, I don't think you could beat yourself up too bad on that, Joe.
No, it, it is confusing the way the calculations are set up, cause it, you know, it talks about comparing. Open space to resource preservation, but, but John's conclusion is entirely right. Resource protection areas does not necessarily equal. Your preserved open space area.
So I will continue to, to work on that and try to, try to come to a good solution for us.
Well, your efforts are sincerely appreciated, John, that's a lot of work, and we, we do appreciate it.
Yeah, I second that. Thank you.
Yeah, but the results are zero.
Well, we're eliminating, uh, by process here. Now, you're, you're. You've been working hard, we know that and appreciate it, so. I'll figure it out so we can move on.
Okay.
Anyway, do you, do you have anything else on, on, uh, comp plan initiatives?
No, not on the comp plan.
Anyone else?
Yeah, so, just in terms of other old business, um. There's been a series of zoning meetings over the last several months for the. Um, cold storage facility that's proposed down in the industrial district and. Um. I missed one meeting, but I've, I've been to the other ones and. There's a interesting article in a recent North Penn Reporter, they had a reporter at the last meeting and. And captured some of the, the emotion of the situation from the residents that were there. So if you wanna get caught up on. Those activities, you can track down that issue of the North Penn Reporter. If you're not a subscriber online, that, then you have to pay for it to get it. Uh, but the, the summary is that the. Applicant is finished presenting. Their proposal and, and their argument in favor of their facility and. The residents have had their opportunity to present their. Um, opposition and reasons for that, so the. The hearing part of the case is closed. And now it's with the zoning hearing board to make their decision, which they will announce at their. February meeting. Which I. I forget the specific date, but it's early in February, the next scheduled zoning. Zoning board meeting will be where they'll announce their decision for, for that project.
That will be February first.
Thank you.
Alright, well, thanks for that update, John.
Do I recall hearing that? That was zoned the way it is because they weren't sure where the exit ramp for three oh nine was gonna be?
I think how.
Yeah, that was the story that I heard from Bill Barnes. Okay. That they just feel like, where are you gonna put this? We don't know, it's always gonna be between either the X and S, could either be on. State route on Cat Hill Road, or I think it was state route at. One fifty-two, first one, so. I don't understand, there was no real, there's even like, well, most of it is anything where it's for lemon pharmaceutical, like a big establishment before. Tell me what it is, uh. I, I have to go to somebody who understands all the road after.
I'm just wondering if that's an area that we might wanna consider revisiting because. Without a, a ramp from three oh nine there, it, it seems a little, uh. Farfetched for. For the proposed zoning, I think.
It, it's really a, a. It's, it's a, a real authentic dilemma, because. There, there's numerous residences in that area that predate the current zoning rules. And so there are some people that have been there forever, and the house has been in their family, and. You can say, well, they, they are kind of the most disadvantaged. Um. But there was somebody that spoke up at the recent meeting, so you know, I just moved in there six months ago and. You know, I moved in for the great views and, and now all that's been taken away. And the first question out of the, the lawyer's mouth for the. Project was, did you know you were buying a house in an industrial area? The person said, no, you know, so some of it's buyer beware. Some of it's the people that were already there are disadvantaged. But even if somebody unknowingly moved into an industrial area. Do they still have some level of say in? That area not being developed beyond what the existing code says?
Like, uh, just coming in, I know that very actual paragraph in the standard of the real estate, the military. Standard of being a sale, we conclude that, hey, you can get out of this agreement. Unless the property, if they tell you what the zoning is. Unless property is known to mostly senior family residential, so. I read that, yes, we had a property, there's a home listed by the, uh, on State Road. Near the. Mobile Home Park, which actually is owned by the home, but you're actually senior families going. How that can happen, yeah, we can walk through the agreement today. Which is, going for residential is known by the home park. But you always end up with these little odd, odd values.
My phone was, oh, sorry, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, I just had a minute to look back through some of the old zoning maps that I have saved, and it looks like. That area became industrial in the nineteen seventy-seven map. So it does go back quite a ways. Um, and at that time, I, I'm sure the Lemon Company was there. Seventy-seven. Uh, it was a farm next to it, but ultimately Teva, when Teva owned it, they owned the whole thing, the farm, you know, they owned all the way out to three oh nine. And so that's why I think it never, you know, it may not have been looked at. In changing it, cause for years and years, it was Lemon and slash, you know, subsequently Teva. But at least it goes back to seventy-seven, the zoning.
I don't, the, uh, the old farm. Was still owned by a separate residence, cause I remember in the eighties. My summer job with Austin, they were just like, touch them on to their side. That was not owned by Teva, and so Teva started expanding. Late eighties, early nineties, they bought the farm next door, and then they brought East LA up to the top of the hill.
Yeah, that makes sense, I know they didn't own it for, always, but more recently they did.
My approach on that was not even so much what's fair to the residents, but I don't think. We really have the infrastructure back there to support industrial zoning in that area.
Yeah, we added the two, the school name from, from, this is right up the hill.
Was it, is it fair to assume that Teva was there before? The zone was created? So the zone was created around Teva?
Uh, I think in part, like I said, the, the, the seventy-seven map, and I'm, I'm sure. You know, back then, I guess it was Lemon Company, but.
Yeah, sure.
They go back before seventy-seven, was my guess.
Teva was definitely there before seventy-seven.
Yeah. So that, I mean, that seems logical that that's why it was extended up, or why the farm was included next to it, you know, I don't know, but.
Right.
But that seventy-seven map, largely the industrial area is the same as it is today.
I would, I would have made sense because. You know, somewhere there's little strip of land that has a bone off of those rock roads, which is a good job, makes. He goes and then there's one hundred and eighty thousand houses, but it did make sense, but it's a, you've got a pump station. But inside of quarry near. It's gonna be a, you know, an iPad, which kind of makes sense, if you've got a pump station, you've got power, you've got. People getting, but that's not how the area dealt.
Alright, well. What were we, this, we're, we're discussing the, uh, the zoning hearing results. Um. Anyway, John, do you have any more on that?
No, I don't, thank you.
Discussion that you would start, right, well, thank you for the update on it. Tim, you had something?
Just that, another, on another note, have we heard anything more on the, uh, battery? Um. Applicant.
Not, not that I'm aware of. I, I think they're still lurking around, Greg, I don't, I don't know if he knows anymore.
There has been no new submission.
I did see in the trade journal that, uh, PMJ is concerned about, uh. Getting enough power into the grid, so I could see that being something that would come back.
Yeah, there's been a lot of talk with regard to it, but there was another battery fire out in California, a lot of guys saw that. But, uh. The setup, I guess, that went up.
A somewhat type of, of setup?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do you? I'll have to look for that, uh. How long ago was that, Tim?
Uh, I think it was like back in October, November, I could look for the article and said, there wasn't much about it, but I was reading about it and. Just because of the industry, you know.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
I, I'll try to get, I'll try to get a link to that.
Thank you. There's a hand raised, Chris.
Yeah, I mean, I should wait till for public comment at the end.
Okay.
Chris, Chris, I see you have your hand raised, I'll, 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 uh. Get a hold of you when we get into public comment here, sorry for the delay. Um, anything else in old business? Alright, let's move forward to new business, I have none, anyone else?
Alex, I have none.
John, I have none.
Tim, I have none.
No.
Alright, let's move into public comment, uh, so Chris Link, there you are. Go ahead, what's he, what do you have there, Chris? Please, uh, name an address, please.
Alright, Chris Link, one nineteen West Branch Road. And my first point is regarding the battery terminal comment, um. I did forward an article to all the township supervisors. Uh, addressing that, I believe it was a Tesla battery plant that, um, that fire occurred out, out in California. Um. My question real quick would be, the, the residences along Cat Hill Road, are those also industrial zoning, or are those residential zoning? How far down does the industrial zoning go?
Yeah, I don't have the map in front of me.
Yeah, the, the industrial is only on the side of the street from the pharmaceutical company. To three oh nine bypass.
To three oh nine, so the attorney's offhand. About him knowing he was purchasing in an industrial zoning area is incorrect. But probably should have been, did his clients know they were purchasing a property that had a thirty-five foot maximum. Red, uh, uh, restriction on it.
Uh, they had to, because that's why they're at the zoning board.
Okay, well, that's, you know.
Yeah, that's why they're.
Just don't understand why we would wanna allow a two hundred and forty-six percent exception to our zoning rules. Um, but that's just, that's just the general comment, so. I appreciate your time, guys, I, I do appreciate what you guys do.
Alright, well, thank you. Have your mind.
Oh, one, one last question, I'm.
Go ahead.
Uh, I would like to know if there is a relationship, a family relationship. Between Chris Durstein and Zach Durstein.
I'm not at liberty to say. Uh, no, there is not, uh, we might be distant relatives, but.
Okay, I appreciate that, just something known.
Now, there, there's quite a few Dursteins in the area.
And that, yeah, I do understand that, thank you very much.
You got it. Anyone else for public comment? Alright, Greg, do you have anything?
No other public comment.
Alright, seeing no other public comment, I would, uh, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Go ahead, John.
Alright, John, you got the motion.
Andy, I'll second.
Alright, all in favor?
Hi. Hi.
Hi.
Hi.
opposed? Motion carries, thank you everyone, and have a great night.
Thank you.
Have a good night, everyone.
Have a good evening.